...nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A motion to see Polly Jenner. Any discussion on, on favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. Receive five minutes of regular meeting, January eleventh, two thousand eighteen. Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Here's your reports. Commissioners?
Uh, just a quick comment about the carp precinct vote. I was glad to see that it passed. Only twenty-two people voted. Those twenty-two people decided what was best for that precinct. And I honestly couldn't agree with them more. I think it's really gonna help us in terms of development. And I just wanna commend Ashland Motion for their work in getting information to the voters and those sorts of things so that they could make an informed vote should the issues do exist.
Thank you, Amanda and Chris and Ashland Motion with me for your work. It's amazing that an issue that could be so important for us has such low level of turnout. But on the other hand, you have four hundred and seventy other people in that precinct that I guess didn't carry the weapon. So, we are looking for some development up there and not totally unrelated to doing these things, I think within the next three, three, four weeks, we're gonna have a really nice announcement about a development up in that inner town. And I'm excited, I'm not gonna draw on you or two. Yeah, anybody else? Well, I have a presentation I'd like to make to a dear lifelong friend and a pillar, leader of our community and Judge John Vincent would come up, please. He hates this sort of thing. And I recognize that. We hated to lose him as our Corporation Council. He's certainly in a great place now. Trying to get through this, John, as I can. Maybe better than you did at your wedding ceremony. It's a proclamation from the mayor of Ashland. Whereas John Vincent has been appointed by Kentucky Governor Matt Bevin to serve as Ford County Circuit Judge where he now presides. Whereas John is highly respected actual attorney and former partner with Martin Vincent, the former city of Ashland Corporation Council. And he's a public servant. He served twelve years as state representative and became part of a powerful Northeastern Kentucky delegation. Whereas John graduated from the University of Kentucky College of Law in the top ten percent of his class, placing fifth among one hundred and fifty classmates. Whereas John's professional career includes being admitted to practice before Kentucky Supreme Court, Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, U.S. Court of Appeals, Federal Circuit, United States District Court for Eastern Kentucky, United States Bankruptcy Court for Eastern District of Kentucky. Further, he is a certified mediator and serves on Kentucky Bar Association Ethics Committee, Kentucky Bar Association Rules Committee. He also served as counsel for San Tation District Number Two, San Tation District Number Four, Boyd County. Has passed members of Board of Directors Northeastern Kentucky Legal Services. And whereas John has held numerous offices and served on many committees throughout his less career, he is a member of Kentucky Bar Association Board of Governors, Kentucky Bar Association, Boyd County Bar Association, Fission Legal Society, Kentucky Justice Association. And whereas, John has been a leader for our community for many years for all the right reasons. He's been a major influence on the youth of Ashland by volunteering as a coach of little league baseball for nearly forty years, building character, attitudes, and athletic abilities of campus young citizens. Now therefore, I Steve M. Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, hereby proclaim Thursday, January twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen, as John Vincent day in the City of Ashland. And with that, John, I also want to give you a key to the city.
Okay.
So, coming back from Kalisburg all the time.
Yeah.
You're a good player too, my other. Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it. In another matter that I regretfully will read a resignation letter from our Commissioner, Martin, Marshal Steen. It's with great regret that I submit my resignation as a member of the Board of City Commissioners of the City of Ashland effective at the next regular meeting of the Board, which is today. It has been a great honor to serve our community with each of you during this term of office. However, as you have become aware, my health condition has made continuing service impossible. I would ask that you consider the appointment of my wife, Pat Steen, to fill my expired term. As my spouse and business partner, she is very active participating in community affairs and attended the meetings during the past year on a regular basis. She is familiar with the issues currently addressed in the Board. Thank you for your support during a difficult time and for your friendship. Yours truly, Marshal Steen. And I would ask for a vote to accept this with the deepest regrets. Have a motion, please. All favor?
Aye.
We all received a letter from Pat Steen. I would like to express to the Board my desire to serve as a member of the Board of City Commissioners of the City of Ashland, feel the unexpired term of my husband, Marshal Steen. As Marshal's wife and business partner, I actively participate in community affairs. I've attended the meetings during the past year on a regular basis. I feel that as a result, I'm familiar with the issues currently addressing the Board. Thank you for your consideration. I think Pat is an outstanding citizen, contributor, cooperative in everything good for Ashland. And I would entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Pat Steen to complete the term of, or of the Marshal Steen.
Mayor, I'd like to make that motion, but I wanna preface it with just a thought here.
Feel great.
It is also with deep regret that we accept the resignation of our friend. He has served the commission well. And in the midst of his illness, he's always been faithfully seated right here and always voted on the agenda items with a clear understanding of the issues with the best interest of the city at heart. He is not only our colleague, but a lifelong friend. And our prayers are with him and his family daily. Now for this motion, this is a no-brainer. Pat Steen is an intelligent, articulate, successful businesswoman who has always represented Ashland well. She would bring to this commission an unbiased and fair voice who has invested her life in Ashland. Over the years, I have witnessed her faithfulness in her city, her business, and in her family. Because of her husband's illness, when the agenda items were sent to Marshal, she has been aware of the issues that we face and has educated herself accordingly. At this time, Mayor and Commissioners, I'd like to accommodate Marshal's request and also grant Pat's desire to serve. I would like to make a motion at this time that we name Pat Steen to fill the open position on the commission for the rest of the term.
I resent being second. And I agree with everything that you said, and I can't imagine any more qualified or better suited person to take Marshal's seat.
Marshal, Commissioner, good. Well said. I appreciate it. I know it's hard to say something. All favor?
Aye.
He'll be sworn in on February eighth. And I think we have a judge here that's gonna be back to be very proud to accept his commission. Very difficult time for us and for people in B and D. Glad you're there, Pat. Where you've been all year. We will stay in touch with Marshal, and I know you'll seek his counsel and guidance through everything. See, Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. If, uh, would the water distribution folks please stand up? We've mentioned during the last BOC meeting, highlighted the work that the water distribution had done over the two-week period. From the first to the ninth of January, these gentlemen and those that couldn't be here responded to forty separate breaks. Normally, a busy month for us is about twenty, a little bit more than that. As you all know in the community, these are some of the harshest conditions that have been here extended for such a long period of time. And as I mentioned before, these, uh, these gentlemen were getting after it every night, every day, went from one job to another, never lost their intensity, never lost their professionalism. And again, I just wanted to publicly recognize them for, one, their skill set that they have, for the work ethic they have, and the dedication that they have to this community. It's difficult for me to put into words. There's a lot of other folks that were involved, the Streets Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department, wastewater collection, water plant, all the administrative folks. But the guys at the pointy end of the spear are the folks that are standing here in their cohorts that couldn't make it so. Mayor Commissioners, I just wanted to publicly recognize them and give them a round of applause.
I don't know when Reed Downs can help schedule with, with me, but the commission would like to, at the minimum, here very soon, buy lunch with all of you. We'll let you choose the spot. Reed, you let us know. It's not out of city funds, it's gonna come out of our pocket, and we're very proud to do for them. We can't thank you, Mayor, for running through all that. You know, all of our departments are kinda involved in making sure you guys are protected, everybody else, all things, all of our departments work well together in that regard. But Utility Department people through the times, and they're not over, we know that, but in the times that you've been out, you know, we were out of town the other day and receiving pictures from, I know we've seen a lot of us, of you guys down the halls, fifteen, twenty degrees, water still pouring. I really believe that the public is starting to develop a little bit better understanding of some of the things you guys go through. And unfortunately, you have to go through some tumultuous times down those halls where people get a wake-up call. And the number of weeks that you all stopped and how some of them were so monumental and you did it in such a short period of time to get people's water back on. And I know some of you probably had, had breaks in your own neighborhoods and made your water resolve, and how important it is for people to get it back on as soon as possible. I'm so proud of you guys. You are Ashland. You're, you're the face of the city. And in weather like this, you're out there working your butts off, and they understand. A lot of the people brought you food and coffee and hot chocolate or whatever. That's, that's some small way they're trying to say thanks to you. I know you understand that. But we, uh, when we were out town the other day, we talked about, I wanna initiate some kind of commendation for this kind of above and beyond to me, above and beyond what you would expect to have, have to do. You know, you, sometimes you didn't get through with the one you're at, and you already knew that you had to hop in the truck and get to the next one. And I saw several of them, and I saw several of you down there, and I don't, anybody get sick over yet? Emergency room or anything? Pretty tough bunch, I won't tell you. But, but God bless all of you, and thank, again, thank you on behalf of the American Commissioners. We appreciate it. And we will provide you lunch, and we'll let you all help determine when you could get together. You got here as a group, barring getting in your truck and taking off and carrying your food with you, we're, we're gonna do it for you. But thank you so much for all the work you did.
Uh, Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. Two other issues. Twenty-Ninth Street, just a quick update. Concrete, the concrete contractors on Simpson, they're just gonna be there several weeks. We don't see any changes anticipated with road closures. The contractor is, we have, received some feedback about the condition of that road. Contractor is working on getting coal patch in there. We're estimating it's gonna start today. The rest of the schedule that was published on the eleventh of December, which is on the website, is still accurate. We don't see any change in the long-term completion of that project. Speaking of the webpage, just one more shout-out to, there's been a lot of updates that the staff has provided to the Public Information Officer that's resulted in changes to the website. We hope to ease the understanding of how to access things in the city. It's an ongoing process, but I encourage all our citizens to, to continue to look at that. The "How Can We Help?" button that we installed four, five months ago to get direct access to the citizens, we're still working on version two point O. We're, every day, we're a little bit closer to improving that. But I do wanna reiterate, this is a way for citizens to directly reach out to the people that can fix some problems in the city. So, if you wanna go straight to the source, whether it's streets, engineering, et cetera, you go on that, you do the drop-down menu, that will go straight to the department head, which will speed up our reaction time. I haven't had any complaints that people have not responded in a timely fashion. Again, we're always looking for ways to improve, but I encourage everybody in the community to use, utilize that asset. Uh, Mayor, the line?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I appreciate it. Anything else, anybody? Just point our meeting as participation. If you'd like to address the Commissioners and Mayor, we'd ask you to come up to the podium and give us your name and address, and within five minutes or less, kinda tell us what you're about. Anyone? We recognize you.
Thank you very much. I just came back to say thank you, excuse my scratchy voice. Thank you for the mayor, for the Commissioners, for everybody that had a big part in it. The problem that we had is now gone. And the guys not only worked at it a little bit, they did an amazing job. I mean, they worked hard, they checked everything, they looked around. I mean, everybody's had a part in it. Code enforcement, the city workers, it's amazing. And sometimes we don't know how many people this is gonna affect, but this one act is gonna affect probably fifty to sixty people. Because now the problem has been eradicated, and the people now be able to come out in the spring, be able to put flowers out, sit out on the porch, start cooking out in the summer, things that were impossible last summer and the fall. So, thank you very much, uh, who all had a part in it. We did see the guys working really hard. And I know that the Commissioners, of course, the mayor, had taken charge at the point I was here for the last meeting. So, it's been the last, what, two weeks from the last time I was here, and already the problem is solved. So, thank you. We have a great group of people work together, and I appreciate everybody that took part in it.
Mayor, let me, let me tell you how much we appreciate you showing, showing up at a meeting to say that. I don't remember that happening before. Honestly, I don't. So, I'm glad it's on, on tape over there now. I may want to talk about that just play over and over once in a while in my office when I've been through the wars with people. But I, you took the time to come down here, and that means a lot to us.
Yes.
It just so happened that, that the night you were here, we were enacting that twenty-four-hour notice, and it took effect. I mean, it, it truly, we were able, Mr. Pullman, his people were able to get on it immediately. Yeah, I'm sorry. Randy? My number-one employee there. He's who I call for everything. Thanks, Randy, and your people, 'cause it did take an army to do that.
Yes, yes.
What we saw out there, it would take some effort, but it's really nice.
I hope.
Yeah. It's nice you to make your efforts to come down here and thank us. And, uh, we're still here if something else happens, you know? And, and the truth of it is, uh, people on Dixon Street can at least, like, yeah, we know where you're at. We, you know, it's, it's important to us, every street in Ashland.
Yes.
But our, listen, I'm telling you, our employees, whatever department they're on, they're on.
They really are the best. And these people are always skeptical at the beginning. They're like, "Well, go ahead and go, good luck." But it's people that are skeptical that don't take the time, you know, to address anything or do it. And the only way you'll know is if somebody speaks up about it. And that's not a real pleasant thing. You know, when I came in, I thought, "Well, this probably isn't gonna be the most pleasant thing to talk about in the city, but it's something that's much needed." So, I really certainly appreciate it. And the people that have a voice, that they won't come, can't come, aren't able to come physically or mentally, I told them, I said, "I will tell the group. Thank you very much." So, God bless you for your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Terrific. Glad you're here. Old business out of May.
First reading on January the eleventh, ordered in City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directed and merit execution agreement between the city and C.C. Price Land Company regarding leasing of parking spaces on the city-owned parking lot at Fifteenth Street in Green Avenue.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
On B?
First reading on January the eleventh, ordered in City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreed order between the city and the Commonwealth of Kentucky Energy and Environmental Cabinet, Division of Enforcement, authorizing payment of civil penalty in the amount of four thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah, and I don't like it, I'm sorry.
See? Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. On C?
First reading, January the eleventh, ordered in City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute a contract between the city and Dixon Engineering, Inc. in the amount of forty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars, accepting their proposal to provide engineering and inspection services for coating, painting, and repairing the one million gallon steel reservoir, Kalisburg Water Storage Center, with the Department of Engineering and Utilities.
Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
On B?
First reading on January the eleventh, ordered in City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute Task Order Twenty-Two between the city and Strand Associates, Inc., regarding the annual combined sewer overflow report for the Department of Engineering and Utilities in the amount of twelve thousand dollars.
See? Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. On B?
First reading, January the eleventh, ordered in City of Ashland, Kentucky amending Section Two, Order Seventy, Series Two Thousand Seventeen, which is commonly known and referred to as the budget ordinance for the city.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. On A?
First reading, January the eleventh, ordered in City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute a contract between the city and Morris Contracting, Inc. with the board terrace, concrete, and handrail project in amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars for the Department of Community and Economic Development through the Housing and Urban Development, Community Development Block Grant.
See? Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. On G?
First reading, January the eleventh, ordered in City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing approving Change Order Two between the city, Ashland Furnace, Inc., Company, Inc., and Ashland Child Development Center, contract regarding installation of an H.B.A.C. system at Fifteen Twenty-Six and Fifteen Thirty-Eight Central Avenue, increasing the amount of the contract by three thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars for the Department of Community and Economic Development through the Housing and Urban Development, Community Development Block Grant.
Salute. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. On H?
Uh, first reading, H?
Yep.
Ordered, uh, first reading, January the eleventh, ordered in City of Ashland, Kentucky amending Orders Twenty-Six, Series Sixty-Seven, as amended Orders Ninety-Two, Series Eighty-Seven, relating to depositors of public funds for the city and ordered to update the depositors.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. On A?
First reading on January the eleventh, ordered in City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting the replacement job descriptions for the position of Finance Director, Assistant Finance Director in Department of Finance, Division of Administration, adopting the replacement job descriptions for the positions of Superintendent Mass Transit, Secretary Bus Driver, Relief Bus Driver, Maintenance Worker Two, Maintenance Worker Three, and Maintenance Worker One, all in the Division of Mass Transit, transferring the Division of Mass Transit from the Department of Public Works to the Department of Finance, adopting the replacement job description for the position of Director of Public Works, amending the authorized positions to reflect the change in departments for Division of Mass Transit of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan, Classification Plan, as adopted the Orders Fifty-One, Series Two Thousand Seventeen, as previously amended.
Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. On J?
First reading on January the eleventh, ordered in City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting the revised job description, position of Corporation Council as full-time position and the revised job description for the position of Assistant Corporation Council as part-time position in the Department of General Government, Division of Legal, and amending the authorized positions of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan, Classification Plan, as adopted the Orders Number Fifty-One, Series Two Thousand Seventeen, as previously amended. The city manager changed the job description and wants this to die for lack of a second. And we have another ordinance on for first reading.
Okay, you get a motion of second, and we'll let, or get a motion and die.
Call for the, for, nobody makes a difference.
Okay. On J, dies for lack of a motion, or for a second. Any other old business? Consent agenda?
Resolution, City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on items appearing on the consented agenda for the regular meeting, Board of City Commissioners, January twenty-five, two thousand eighteen.
Salute. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. New business? Out of May?
Ordered in City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute an amended agreement with Safe Harbor in Northeast Kentucky, Inc. The sub-recipient of two thousand seventeen program year Community Development Block Grant Funds is adopted the Orders Fifty-Eight, Series Two Thousand Seventeen, changing the contract information for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. On B?
Ordered in City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute an amended agreement with Hillcrest Bruce Mission, sub-recipient of two thousand seventeen program year Community Development Block Grant Funds, is adopted the Orders Fifty-Nine, Series Two Thousand Seventeen, changing the contact information for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. On C?
Ordered in City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute amended agreement with Community Assistance Referral Service, Inc., Cares, sub-recipient of two thousand seventeen program year Community Development Block Grant Funds, is adopted the Orders One Oh Four, Series Two Thousand Seventeen, changing the contract information for the, uh, contact information with the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. On D?
Ordered in City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute agreement with Ashland Community Kitchen, Inc., the sub-recipient, two thousand seventeen program year Community Development Block Grant Funds, is adopted the Orders Sixty-Two, Series Two Thousand Seventeen, changing the contact information for Department of Community and Economic Development.
Salute. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. On A?
Ordered in City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute amended agreement with Shelter of Hope, Inc., sub-recipient, two thousand seventeen program year Community Development Block Grant Funds, is adopted the Orders Fifty-Six, Series Two Thousand Seventeen, changing contact information for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. On A?
Two more. Sorry to wear you out on this. Ordered in City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute amended agreement, Boyd County- agreement, Boyd County Council of Aging, Inc., Ashland Senior Center, the sub-recipient, 2017 program year Community Development Block Grant Funds, is adopted the ordinance 61, Series 2017, changing the contact information for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Any discussion? All favor?
We have an employee leaving Community and Economic Development. That's what this is all about. I'm sorry, I didn't say that earlier. Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directive to the mayor to execute amended agreement with Ashland Child Development Center, Inc., the sub-recipient, 2017 program year Community Development Block Grant Funds, adopted the ordinance 63, Series 2017, changing the contact information for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. On H?
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directive to the mayor to execute a full attachment license agreement between the city and Kentucky Power Company for the use of a utility poles for the purpose of hanging fiber for the installation of a security system at the city water storage reservoir, Department of Engineering and Utilities, at a cost of $225 per day.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. On I?
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky accepting the proposal of GRW Engineer J to provide a water treatment plant SCADA and field instrumentation needs assessment in the amount of $19,900 for the Department of Engineering and Utilities.
Have a motion. Salute. Second. Any discussion?
How is this different than what we were paying for for the study that we're doing already? I just wanted to know.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is specifically focused on, broadly speaking, the computers, the software, and all the instrumentation that goes along with the execution of the water plant itself. So that was not part of the water stuff. And our, the water treatment plant, some of the software is incredibly outdated, and so we're not operating at that level. What this study will give us is more than likely the Pinto, the Ford, and the Cadillac version of what we could consider for investment to improve the operations of the water plant.
Just making sure we weren't paying for the same thing twice. Thank you.
All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. On J?
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky amending Section 2 of ordinance 142, Series 2007, which created a downtown residential parking zone within the city, transferring oversight of downtown residential parking to the Ashland Police Department.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion?
Currently done by community.
I just think it makes sense.
All favor?
I'm sorry. The only thing I would add to that is I really would like rest of review again of parking situation downtown. We've got poles, half, half poles sticking out on every sidewalk. To me, that doesn't look good, and I'm not sure that that's, if we're not going to put meters back up, that we need to go ahead and make a decision to remove them completely. Aesthetically, it just makes our town look a little less than stellar.
What year do you think they took the meters off the top?
I think it's been, Marty, about four, five years ago. Obviously, the reason they were left off was to decide whether they were going to be permanently left off.
Sure. Mayor, Mayor Commissioners, we can absolutely give a cost estimate on that. It is, it's pretty costly, and I agree with your analysis, Commissioner.
Probably need to know what's going to cost to take it off.
We'll do a cost analysis for it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. On K?
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing reclassification, Section 8 voucher grants coordinator, and adopting revised job description for the position in the Department of Community and Economic Development, amending the authorized positions to reflect said reclassification in Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan, Classification Plan, is adopted the ordinance number 51, Series 2017, as previously amended.
Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. On L?
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directive to the mayor to execute a contract between the city and Morris Contracting, Inc., for labor materials for miscellaneous concrete and asphalt repair work for up to one year in the amount of $196,040 for the Department of Engineering and Utilities. Apparently, I skipped one, I'll go back to that. For the Department of Engineering Utilities.
Salute.
Second.
Uh, just a quick update. Is this in response to trying to make sure we've got that covered from the budget?
This is a, it's an annual requirement that we do for patching as necessary in roadwork throughout the city in Ashland, a little bit less, it came a little bit under what it was last year.
It's kind of when we have water breaks.
Right.
Exactly.
We gotta go back to L.
Yeah. All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. Go like Dale.
I'll do it. Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky amending ordinance 99, Series 2010, as previously amended ordinance 97, Series 2013, regarding rules and regulations for the use of corded ice on riverfront park within the city.
Second. Any discussion?
Just a comment. I appreciate you guys looking at this, and I think it's really going to help us utilize our riverfront in the way that it was designed to be used, and sort of updating how we use it, and those sorts of things are really going to move us forward in terms of getting some things happening down there. So thank you.
All agreed. All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. On M.
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting the revised job description for the position Corporation Counsel as full-time position, the revised job description for the position of Assistant Corporation Counsel, and has adopted, um, I'm sorry, uh, watch. Uh, position Assistant Corporation Counsel as part-time position, Department of General Government, Division of Legal, and amending the authorized positions in the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan, Classification Plan, as adopted the ordinance 51, Series 2017, as previously amended.
Much for the second discussion.
Just a comment. What is in front of us is a full-time corporate counsel and a part-time assistant counsel. Stop me if I'm incorrect anyway. Um, I'm not sure that we're all on the same page, if that's how we think that should go. And I'd like to have that discussion in terms of what this body believes that that department should look like. Um, I know, I've always thought it odd that our, I don't mean any disrespect, but that our, that our corporate counsel is a part-time position and the assistant counsel is a, is a full-time position. And I, and I see this as a way of fixing that department, um, but I'm not sure that fixing it is a full-time and a part-time. I think that it, personally, I think, uh, the part-time is, isn't necessary unless we hire somebody that says yes it is. I think that we had a dedicated full-time corporate counsel that we might see that we don't need a part-time counsel. Just a comment.
City manager, would you explain, you sent an email out, you had done a study on similar cities around Spain. Could you share that? You don't care.
I will, thank you, Commissioner. I'm echoing what Commissioner Clark said. I believe a full-time attorney with benefits is in the best interest of the city. I came to the conclusion based on the models used by other cities, discussions with mayors or city managers in a lot of other cities. Of formerly second-class cities, there's 13 of them, seven employ at least one full-time attorney with benefits, and four employ full-time, the equivalent of full-time on contract without benefits. I got a call this morning, of those four, one of those cities is actually looking now at full-time, so that's eight of the 12 use that model. They believe that the, the full-time accessibility of legal counsel to not only the city manager, but also to the mayor, the commissioners, and to the department staff is critical. Of the seven that I talked to that currently employ it, none would go back. It eliminates any, if this is, this is from theirs, and I'm similarly careful because I don't want to offend anybody that has worked in the city, this is from the other city managers and the mayors, that eliminates any perception of conflict of interest. And that was kind of a trend that I saw in talking to the folks that I did. And generally, what they, what they have hired, the seven, the other seven cities, is within what our paying compensation schedule is for a full-time city attorney of 84 to $134,000, which, except for one city, Radcliffe, which pays $53,000 on contract for their city attorney. They were the, which, coincidentally, is where I grew up, but they, they were the outlier on it. I spoke to the mayor there, I couldn't figure out what they do differently, other than their operating budget, their, of course, if you've been down there, you know they're a veteran community for Fort Knox, and their overall operating budget is $12 million a year, which doesn't compare to anybody else that I saw. But essentially, I think it's in the best interest of the city. I agree with Commissioner Clark that I don't think it needs to have, to, to say that we need to have a sitting corporation counsel at this time until if and when we hire a full-time position, that individual makes, makes recommendation. There's one other thought, every other city also, just like we do, contracts out for specialty work. So while you have a sal, a salary of a full-time city attorney, there are still cases that we contract out to get specialty work done. Every other city I've talked to does that.
So let me, let me ask, so the city of Radcliffe, how many people live in Radcliffe? What was the population?
Twenty-two thousand.
So would you say that out of all the cities you surveyed, they were the closest in population size?
Um, there was, I'd have to look at it, there were some that, there, Henderson, I'd have to look at it.
And out of the, out of the eight that you presented, how many of them had assistant corporate counsel?
Paul Ingraham has a paralegal, they contract out for what they can't cover. Covington has four full-time city attorneys. Just a note, they're self-insured cities, so they have a lot more legal challenges than others that don't. Frankfurt has a full-time city attorney, did not see where they had an assistant. Henderson has a full-time city attorney with a legal assistant. Their total budget's 331. Somerset is not a formerly second-class city, it was somebody that has, was mentioned to me by Kelsey, full-time. Hopkinsville, and then we go into the contracts.
Right.
And so those are a mix of one to two different firms. Every city is different.
Sure, sure. I appreciate your research on that.
I think he's closest in population, but only has a $12 million pension. Is that correct?
Right.
Frankfurt's 28,000, Henderson's 28,000, Richmond's 30,000.
I don't know the answer.
Well, you know.
Covington, they're all, they're all in their, in their magazines and stuff, they need to want to mention their former.
I guess my only comment would be this, is I would, I would appreciate the opportunity to, in a similar way that you're going to spend some money to evaluate the best plan for a water system, that we also use the same kind of methodology to assist us at the board to find out what would be the best plan. I appreciate your research, but I, at this time, I just don't feel like I have enough information armed to make a good financial decision. You know, we, as a body, we appreciate the need for you to have somebody you can call at, at least, we've actually, we even had that discussion yesterday. But we also owe the taxpayers that we can vet everything and make sure it's the most cost-efficient way of doing business in every aspect of the city. And I would just appreciate maybe some more time, even at budget time, to look at that and, and consider all options.
To be clear, you want me to commission a study similar to?
Well, that's just me. Again, I'm not, I'm not the, speaking on behalf of the board, that's just my opinion. I would, I would really like to see an RFP sent out to see what, what bids we get back so we are better informed about what those dollar values could be for our city, because you said each one is a little bit different, especially once you've studied it, and the ranges were wild, 54,000 up to, what was it, 200?
Everybody was in the, there was two outliers.
Yeah.
Radcliffe at 53,000, Boeing Green at 132, everybody else was between 90 and 105.
I would just feel more comfortable, I guess, having the discussion with this board, maybe at budget time, where we all can talk about it.
I'm worried about waiting until budget time, till June, because we ran into this problem, and I talked to the mayor about this earlier, we ran into this problem in searching for a city manager. We waited until budget time to talk about the city manager, and then it became close to an election time, and we weren't going to hire a city manager for the next commission to have to work with. And I worry that we'll run into that same, because we've been up against that before, that we'll, we'll have that same sort of timeline and leave all sorts of things on the table for whoever it happens to be that we put off hiring. And if they, if we wait, it may not even be this group that hires that. And I think that's just too long a wait. We have to have corporate counsel, and I know you're here for us, and we appreciate that, but we have to have corporate counsel. And just kind of putting it off and waiting, I, I think is a bad idea.
Well, do we, can you present to me what, with benefits and salary, what it would cost the city to have a full-time attorney?
If you went with a $95,000 salary, there's $54,000 in benefits.
And that includes pension and insurance?
Like it's 7,200, retirement's 26,000, insurance is 19,000.
So what would the total cost be for a full-time and part-time as presented to the board today?
Full-time position's 154,000 in benefits, the current, if this moved to the current part-time position, and we held the contract in place, that's $90,000, that's with no benefits, but that's for the current assistant city attorney.
So we're looking about 250 benefits?
If you maintain the deputy position, which is not what I, or, excuse me, assistant corporation counsel, which is not my recommendation.
But it is in the ordinance for us to pass today.
If, this is to give us the latitude to hire to that position.
Okay.
Does not mean you have to hire the physician.
Okay.
Here's what I think. I would vote no again, like I did the first time, because I think it's a total policy decision for a condition to make in the mayor. And that's, we, I'm, I'm opposed to a part-time position if we hire a full-time attorney, but I certainly would look at some of the cities similar to us, or even, it don't have to be, but where you would use, on certain cases, we could contract by the hour. I won't get tied up with an assistant city attorney that we don't know who, what, when, where they are, how much time they're putting in, and they're going to have to report to somebody, like you said, Mayor, and I've told you before, I think regardless if we have a department head, you know, raise a department head, the best ever, anywhere. But if there's somebody under him, and, and you need to step in and do something, then that's your job. And I, you know, I've told you that I don't depend on, department heads always to be able to handle everybody in the department, a lot of things going on all the time, and that's kind of just a, a vulnerable slant there, but I think you're responsible for that. You're responsible for all of them, you know, top to bottom, the first in and the last out. But I, I believe that when you say budget time, I'm hoping we'll, we'll get into the budget heavy in March, if not in February, Mayor, because we, we've always historically, and we've got this far.
It's always, it's always our.
I know, but I know that Mr. Grubbs is going to be ready for us, because he's been working every day, and Ms. Bee's been working on it. We, to be sincere and respectful stewards of the citizens' tax money and everything else coming through here, not only in services, but in revenues, we have to put time in, and we can't just come down here and meet a couple hours during the day and expect to really get into developing a budget. The years that I was a commissioner and the years I was a mayor, we met for several months, we met five, six hours a session, sometimes that's not pleasant, I'm not saying I'm always for that, we can always break it up, but this is an item here that I think we need to be sitting around the budget table and talking about what, what we want to pay, I, I hear these numbers, and what, what it really would take for the size of Ashland to get a good full-time attorney in, and not have the pension and pensions on, on, anymore on that job more as on an assistant, and I would be more for contracting, and I don't probably like to use that, but it's an hourly rate with, with lawyers if we needed them to come in to pick up some slack. And until we, as commissioners, sit down, we can't discuss this in private session, it's not personnel, it's not litigation, but it is a policy matter to me, only half this commission, we can easily in a budget meeting, very professionally and diplomatically discuss how we think the legal department should operate. That's our job, that's not the city manager's job. He can start to. He certainly will have input, and he can say, well, you know, it would help me a lot with this. And I have made this comment to the city manager, but, you know, he came in, when he took office here as our city manager, it's kind of a perfect storm. We had a new corporation counsel coming on board, and we had an assistant who was purportedly doing the daily, who's in legislature, I mean, let's just say it like it is, and he's looking for a call and get a legal answer, just like I do, just like you do. And small-town America, I really don't care where it is, we're elected to the people, and if I get a call on a resident, there's a property dispute, or it's a utility issue, it's a police issue, whatever, I'm not always going to call city manager and say, well, you look into this with the legal department. I will when I run into him, or I'll send him a note, but I'll call the attorney and say, hey, what's the status here? What's the city's liability? What do we do? And so, it's been a difficulty for us to, you know, not having that accent. I want you to have, I want you to have that accent. But you've never served under Sonny Martin, being here all, I mean, Sonny's...
Let me interrupt. I'm not, he's not under me. Anyway.
No, no, served with, I said. But what I'm saying, as corporation counsel, we're not any collision course here. In fact, we're, I think we're fine at this point, but I would say we need to begin our budget sessions early, and as early as the first of March, and hit this item first. Despite admitting, you know, we go to department, 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 you have to leave to department, department. I'm not voting for it, and I did it last time, because that's a pure policy decision for us to make, and whatever that policy is, we say, we're not going to have any dump trucks this year, then the city manager's going to have to make sure it gets done with the number of dump trucks we approve. And what we can afford, and I hear it all the time from citizens, our population's decreasing, we still have sixteen square miles to take care of, don't get me wrong, but we aren't building our staff down here. In fact, I've said many times, if you all had two, you might have... If we, with this pension going to hit us, this pension debt, we have to look at every job that comes open, either through retirement or somebody just quits, do we need to fill it? Can we absorb it somewhere? Somebody can say, well, if you could do that, why don't you do it already? Well, let me tell you why. Because when you do that, something, something's going to suffer a little bit. And I understand that, but, you know, you have to pay your bills, and if the legislature together says you go one point nine million dollars, we do not have, then you've got to find a way to pay it. And this is just one of those issues here, we have to have a good legal department, but I don't think you need an assistant, because we're going to hire a full-time.
Do we agree that we need a full-time city attorney?
I'm not arguing that one.
Are we at the place where we can all say, yes, we need a full-time city attorney?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm not arguing that, yeah. I'm saying how we can have the best legal department we can have for the least, without changing our legal abilities. That's what I say.
Do we have to clump this together, then? Can we just vote on the full-time attorney?
The full-time city attorney and get that process rolling?
No, I'm not going to. I'd rather do it when we can hammer it out, and that's what it's going to be without an assistant, and how it's going to look like. I know, Mayor, I've had conversations where, well, we don't think, you know, we're not going to hire one so we can say we hired a new city attorney.
Oh, no, I think you're right.
But, you know, it's Ashland law and people, I mean, maybe there'll be some attorneys locally that are interested to do this, and we have a lot of outstanding companies. So, I'm just not ready to vote for it today. Looks exactly like it last time, and I think the philosophy's the same, too.
Except that I think that we've at least gotten to the place that we all agree that we need a full-time city attorney. And if the part-time wasn't in this particular one, I think we might get there.
I think we ought to negotiate the benefits. If a person doesn't need benefits, okay. Add benefits.
I concur. Commissioner, I concur. I think there's, I think that's when you do it at budget time, and you look, because when you offer it, you can't pave the way then.
Right.
But you say, here's what we're offering to do, and I think we need to look on a bit wider scale with what's hitting us with the lack of health program we have, when people could be getting it elsewhere, you know. But again, we, I, it's just, it's a political issue, but it's a reasonable issue.
Well, I think that, I hate to keep the laboring point, I just think that the sooner we make an decision on this, the better. And I just, it worries me so much about just waiting.
Well, I don't think this is an emergency by any stretch, and I, you know, I think of, when I think of the issues of the city, and what we were elected as a body to do, I think the one thing that citizens are expecting us to do right now is our water system is our priority, and I want to make sure that we've got money in place for that, and making sure that we have our ducks in a row financially and otherwise, for that is the most important thing. And I think we do need to consider this, but I think budget time is the most appropriate, just to give us more time to take in full analysis financially of what we can afford and what the city deserves.
What we pay right now? Tell us.
I don't have the number of fronts.
The current full-time is, previous was one oh nine, and ninety were the two serving attorneys. Sonny has graciously taken less than that in his acting position. One, there was one with benefits and one without.
Senator Dina?
And I'm sure we will let down the commissioner, and I think we're appropriate time to do this a budget hearing, and I'm willing to do the first thing we work on is this.
I'm going to agree or disagree. I respect all of you.
I feel the same way about you.
And I'm just, you know, I agree or disagree. I don't know for it.
Okay. No problem.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Two to two. It dies for lack of movement, and we'll revisit it. Item?
Of... Ordinance City of Action Kentucky providing the regulation gathering disposing and destruction of garbage, rubbish, and related waste materials, fixing fees therefore, establishing the division of solid waste, establishing sewer and water rates, tap fees, insulation charges, service charges, industrial pretreatment charges, penalties and interest, providing a penalty for the violation of the ordinance, and repealing conflicting ordinances and all amendments thereto.
Aye.
In discussion. On paper?
Aye.
Oppose last time? Any other new business?
Yes, the mayor asked for your concurrence in the appointment of W. Richard Martin, Jr., twenty-four oh three Suzanne Court, to the Boyd County Emergency Ambulance Service for a two-year term that began January three, two thousand eighteen, and will expire January three, two thousand twenty.
On paper?
Aye.
Thank you all. I appreciate that. Anything else?
Well, you've got executive session.
But no other new business?
Other than potential litigations, is there anything else, Mr. City Mayor?
Motion going executive session to discuss potential litigation.
Motion.
On paper?
Aye.
Only potential litigation to discuss, and our votes will be taken, we'll come back out. Adjar. We appreciate you being here. We won't be doing anything when we come back out. Thank you. We convened at one twenty-seven. Only potential litigation was discussed and no action was taken. Vote adjourned?
Second.
We adjourned.